I call this meeting the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees Pre-Meeting Briefing to Order at 6:00 PM on August 1st, 2019. Our first, well, our second item is briefing session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda for the regular board meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on August 1st. Are there any consent agenda items anybody would like to discuss?
I have one.
Okay.
There's an attachment in front of you for item 4DD for tags appraisers, and we left off one name. It's highlighted for you tonight. And so just notice, and under consent, that there was a correction for an additional person that is sitting at your desk. So, under 4DD consent.
It looks like this. So, Dr. Chapman, are we ready to go to item number three?
Ms. Tillman would like to make one comment on a consent agenda item.
I just wanted to recognize Agenda Item V for Approval of School Meal Prices for 1920. Our Student Nutrition Services is actually recommending that our students who are eligible for reduced pricing be qualified for free so that they will receive their meals, both breakfast and lunch, for free for the duration of the school year. And that's about 2,200 students, and it could be a savings of $122 for one child. And so I just wanted to recognize our Student Nutrition Services for making that recommendation.
That's just one more component of educating the whole child, just trying to do everything that we can to take out those obstacles. And what child nutrition has done to make this recommendation is tremendous, and so I hope you support that idea.
Board members, any questions, any discussion? Dr. Chapman, my question on that is, do the buses work to get the kids there for breakfast, or is that something that we can work on?
Yeah, yeah, they'll already be there by the time we do that service. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, not an issue.
So with that, we're going to do Item 3 Tasby Leadership Update. So I'd ask Dr. Chapman if I could have a few minutes. I feel, not an obligation, but I would like to share with you the experience of what Leadership Tasby is like. Previous Carrollton Farmers Branch Board members, Frank Shore, James Goode, Lynn Chaffin, and I think there were several others, but I don't remember, who have participated in Leadership Tasby in the past. It's a program selected from Board members throughout the state, and they purposefully look for a lot of diversity in size of the district, and they're looking for diversity in populations, and also diversity in how the districts are doing. So you'll have, you know, Allen with their stadium and Frisco, but you'll also have other schools that are Ds as school districts. So I didn't understand when I got into it how they really build a class that's got a whole lot of variety, and then through the year you become a team and you learn a lot about the other districts. So, the first place we went, and I didn't really, nobody else ever called themselves this, and I'm not going to do it, but Frank Shore always referred to himself as a master trustee, and I thought, so what gives you that title? So it comes from completing Leadership Tasby. So first, we went to Austin during Tessa Tasby, so this year it will be in Dallas. And so they, you spend two and a half days with the new class, forming as much as you can, getting to know each other. One of the speakers that came and talked to us talked to us on Small Talk. What I learned, and there's a lot of things I learned from this, but one of them is when someone says, "How was your weekend?", they don't want a five-minute explanation of, "How was your weekend?". So we practiced, "Great!", and then you just move on. And then we practiced how to reach out more if you really want more details. So this book was very interesting to me, and it was most interesting because it's a civil engineer that wrote it. And I thought, yeah, we need this kind of help. So then, so that was the first thing in Austin. We had lots of just get-to-know-you things. You're so inundated that the man leading it is getting all sorts of tidbits on everybody while you're just kind of like, I don't know what I'm learning here. But we didn't know each other, we were still kind of on edge. So the next meeting, we went to Amarillo, and they do take you to the Big Texan, and you start kind of getting to know people better. You may be on their plane, you may be able to just sit down and talk to people because you sat next to them in Austin, and you get to know them a little better. The first place we went in Amarillo was La Fores. Has anybody ever heard of, or Le Fores, or am I pronouncing it? It has 176 students. So if you want to see a whole nother experience in this world, and there are a lot of districts in Texas that are this size. So we had several people in our class from districts this size. This is a superintendent's home that they provide. They also have about five houses. They use their bond program money to build housing for their staff, and it's like, wow! But that is, this superintendent, her house is on the playground. That is the playground beside her house. And there is a lot of poverty in La Fores, and they pick up kids in a bus from an adjacent school district that's a lot bigger, so about 60 of their kids are coming from another school district. And their target is CTE and not putting kids in college. So they were really focusing on helping the kids do, there's a plant in Amarillo that may be a nuclear plant or something, and so they prepare the kids to go work there, they prepare them to do whatever, but most of these kids don't want to go to college. So it was very interesting. As a class, we took a whole lot of pictures of things we saw, that was Canyon, so, but the La Fores superintendent, I mean, the Board of Trustees had their vision on the wall. And it was just, it was a K-12 campus, and it was a whole nother experience for me to see how they feed them, how they all interact on the playground, how they all work in the gym, what an incredibly small school does and is able to do for the kids. So then we went to Canyon ISD, and they actually had a program called iConnect where the kids develop like a, they run the data support, so the computer system at the high school. So you put in a work order, and you're going to get a kid responding to the teacher, you'll get a kid responding to other kids, and they have standards they're trying to meet, they have to schedule their time, and they become Dell technicians, and so a lot of us thought that was really interesting. Another thing they did on Fridays, they would, okay, I have to check my notes, they, okay, it's the aha moments, here we go. So at the airport, we started taking pictures of each other, like, oh, look, I'm trying to remember who my new friends are. So this is La Fores, "You Matter", and "Some Kids Are Smarter Than You", and that saying, you know, it was just kind of aha moments. So we learned in Amarillo how to work with people that are different from us, which I thought I was pretty aware and pretty good at this, but this woman's presentation was another knockout, amazing presentation. I think he actually has some of the same speakers every year because they are so good. But they have La Fores Passionate Pirate Fridays, but then they have flex time at the high school in Canyon where the kids just go and they have subgroups and they just do whatever they want, they don't really have homeroom. So it was a very different concept. So after Amarillo, a couple months later, we went to Harlingen. I had a work study that Thursday night, so I missed half of the trip, but I flew out that night and was able to participate in some of the experiences. So they went and saw the, kind of like our program at Turner, at Harlingen. I rode on the airplane next to a gentleman, and, you know, what do we know about what's going on at the border? We actually met with like 25 Border Patrol agents, there's 50 of us, we could ask them anything we wanted. And then we went down to the border, and we got out, and we walked around, and we talked about border walls, we talked about what they see. And then we went to an asylum seeker center, we built backpacks, and we brought tons of supplies, and we got to see their story and their kids, and then it was just a real educational experience that, you know, I don't get in my normal life. So then after that trip, a lot of the board members, not me, went to NSBA in Philadelphia, and they all networked there. Things we were required to do to participate in Leadership Tasby was we had to give a PowerPoint presentation with seven slides about our district, and the last one was, you know, famous people, so I listed David Blau and Vanilla Ice or whoever that, you know, so, you know, you've got to come up with something. But it was interesting, and then each class member served, you had to volunteer and serve different roles as tour guides or pre-visit planning and things. And then we had six subgroups that studied books, and we had to give reports at the end. One of the board members, one of the members of the class decided to make coins for the whole class, and he expects us to carry them with us at all time, that we need to always have our class coin because we can remember what we're here for and what public education is all about. So then we went to Tyler. We actually arranged to go to Tyler because we heard that there was an operation to bring 2,000 students from China to Tyler and get them housed and enrolled in Tyler SD, but it fell apart before we got there. But, so, we went and toured Bullard, and one of the takeaways I had from there, the superintendent said, when he canceled school due to a bad weather, a kid committed suicide that day. I had never thought about that's something that could happen, is if a kid doesn't have hope and joy in their life, and school is kind of, they go and they get fed, and they are busy all day, and they, their mind's not on whatever might bother them. He said, "I always now", you know, he said, "I knew it was major then, but now I don't cancel school unless I have no other choice." And I was like, wow, that's a huge impact. So we went and visited Bullard, and then we went to Tyler, and then they have like our AMAT Academy, and then just lots of hearing how people work. While we were in Tyler, one of the board members in the class was part of a thing Tyler has where it was in their theater, kind of like the downtown Carrollton Theater, but bigger, and they talked about diversity in Tyler and people's stories. And so this board member that was participating in our class stood up there for 10 minutes and told his story. So that was really cool. Well, on the way back, there was a tornado went through anyone going south, so I was not going south. So there was a lot of social media news of, "Did you get home? Did you see the tornado? What did you see?". So we were all like, he kept us there too long. But, so that was fun. And then, then we started having a lot of class support in May because a lot of the class was running for reelection, and everybody was trying to touch base, you know, supporting, lifting up, encouraging, "Go get them, do whatever you can". And then when I went to the grassroots rally in Austin, I ran into other people that were in our class in addition to people from North Texas that I knew already. So it helps you just know more people. And then we had this amazing woman speaker in Tyler named Cory, and I can't tell you her last name, but she spoke at SLI, and she had an eight-hour class at SLI. Well, what Tasby started doing is not telling you who the speakers are, because there are people like her that I would like go just spend all day with her because she is so amazing. And so I kind of am embarrassed to share some of the stories of things I learned from her because I thought I was really aware and well-rounded, but a lot of it is making you realize sometimes you're not as sharp or as aware as you think you should be about things you should know. So this is when we started doing book reports. We did school reform, and each group had two books, and this is, in the center in the red tie is John Classy from Frisco, and this Pitfalls of Reform, John Tanner went and led their board in a leadership thing yesterday. So he got to meet that author. The next one was social media, moving students from digital citizenship to digital leadership. They actually brought the author in on the screen, and the author spoke to us from the screen about everything to do with her book, so that was a whole nother concept for people like me. And then my group, I thought I wanted to learn about poverty, but the problem is we picked books that were 15, 20 years old, so what we learned was our books weren't really current, and why did we pick them? But it did help still to understand more and so, but mainly I learned more from other people's books also. Immigration issues, we learned a lot going to the border. And then also leadership, multiplier effect, and the ideal team player, and then in June we graduated. So I just want to recommend that it's a really cool program. I hope that people, members of CFP Board, you know, consider signing up in the future. It's just a couple of long weekends, but it, you form a lot of relationships, but you also figure out a lot about what's, I grew up in Port Arthur, and one of the board members was from Port Arthur, so it was very good or interesting to hear what's going on in Port Arthur. One of the neighboring districts was West Orange. That woman, their district I think was a D, she stood up there and cried, and cried, and it's like, wow! You know, she felt very much less than the rest of us, and it's like, no, you know, you just, you need to get going and try to improve, and that's what we all are trying to do. So that's the last of my presentation, so thank y'all.
All right, thank you. Well, speaking of the accountability system and scores, Dr. Warnock's going to share with you our preliminary STAR scores.
Thank you. These are really just for internal discussion at this point. They are not, have not been released, and there's still some things subject to change. So before we actually look at the scores, and I was tempted, you know, it's like kids when you pass out papers, like everybody is just looking, you know, I was tempted to wait and hand them out at the, you know, at the end. So here's the list of scores for the district and for each campus, and we'll look at that in just a second. But just a refresher about how our accountability is calculated, there's three domains. So the first one, student achievement, and that is just how many students we had approaching, meets, and masters. And then there's school progress, and that's calculated in one of two ways. The state looks at both of those and says, "Which one did you do better in district? Which one did you do better in campus, achievement or progress?". Then you get that as a score that weights a 70% of your accountability. Then the third is closing the gaps, and that weights as 30% of the accountability. It's a little bit different for elementary, for middle, and for high school in the district. So for elementary, middle school, 100% of the accountability is sitting on STAR scores only for approaches, meets, and masters. For high schools and for the district, several things come into play. We look at 40% is related to the EOC or STAR, 40% is about this college career, military readiness indicators, and then 20% is the graduation rate. So the slides, you have there all of the pieces that count in college career and military readiness. We put a lot of effort into tracking that this year and being very specific about what our plans were for every child. We included that at our graduation teams. That won't be included until next year's accountability because college career and military readiness runs a year behind. So the results that we see for this year's college career and military readiness are actually from 2017-18. So we'll see again a bump in that for next year because we did a really, I was really proud of our schools, our teams did a great job of tracking that and looking at it. The other piece is graduation rate. It also runs a year behind. So we had our highest graduation rate ever for 2017-18, so we see the benefit of that in this year's accountability. So our graduation rate that we just wrapped up for this past year, we won't see impacting until next year's accountability. Student progress is one of two things. So it's either academic growth, so looking at how a child did in one year compared to the next year, and if they grew, or looking at the performance of students at the campus controlled for poverty. So, and then we get either A or B. So as a district, B was our better result. We, our relative performance, our student achievement, actual results for the population that we serve was higher than our academic growth. So that's how we were calculated. I included this slide, so you have it as a resource, but this is looking at how we track students moving from one level to the next and how many points they can earn. We really focused in on growth because eventually growth leads to proficiency. So this has been our really digging into this approach with campuses, and we see campuses like Landry and McQuarter that were C and D last year that were Bs this year because of the growth that the students made. So that really impacted, particularly for Landry, this was huge for them. So that's really, really a celebration. And again, that relative performance is where we control for poverty and look and see, if we compare to other, other school districts with about 65% poverty, how are we performing? Well, we're performing at the top of the pack there, so that, that's why we were an A there. For domain three, closing the gaps, this looks at 14 different groups. So our, all of our different race and ethnicity groups, students who have served in special education and not, students who are continuously enrolled with us for four consecutive school start windows, students that are mobile, and then our English language learners are economically disadvantaged students. And this is looking at the students who meet grade level expectations. So not approaches, but the meet grade level expectations. And then those are weighted in certain categories. One piece that I want to really touch on because this is a big change this year is the English language proficiency indicator. Last year, the 2017 results for Telpass, which is our English proficiency test, were what were included in the calculations for accountability. This year, we have a new test, and they looked at growth from 2018 to 2019. Percentage of students had to hit their growth target, which means they either had to score advanced high, the highest level of English proficiency, or they had to grow an entire level in order to be hitting the growth target. So if I grew from advanced to higher in the advanced category, but I didn't hit the advanced high, I don't count for growth in that target. It counts as 10% of the closing the gaps domain. So you either get all of it or none of it. And this was a new assessment for us in 2018 and 2019, and the state had that target set at 42%. So 42% of your English language learners needed to hit the growth target. The results across the state must have been terrible because they have gone and petitioned the U.S. Department of Education to lower our percentage to 36% as a meets target. We haven't heard back from the Department of Education yet on that, but that could impact our ratings. Because right now, TEA is calculating our preliminary ratings with that target set at 36. If the U.S. Department of Education denies that request and it sets the target at 42, it will impact both the district and some campus ratings because we will, you know, we don't meet that target at several campuses, or in between that 36 and 42. So our unofficial results in our student achievement domain, last year we were at an 84, and that is our approaches, meets, and advanced there. This year we were at an 87, so we're up three points there. So we really want to celebrate the hard work of our campuses, our teachers, our principals, all of our content director staff and coaches, you know, it's a team effort there. Our school progress part A, we were flat there, so we're going to be continuing to look at that. We've actually had a decline in what we call backslides, which is a good thing. I call them backslides. A kid who maybe scored meets one year and then they fall back to approaches the next year, they were masters and they fall back to meets, we're seeing a decrease in that, which is good. It means it's, kids are maintaining or advancing, but we continue to monitor that. If you look at our school progress part B, that was a big celebration for us, a 5% gain there. So we were at a 91 there. And then on closing the gaps, we are at an 89. And I want to explain one little rule of why we're projecting that the district overall will be at an 89. If you look on the table here, the first page I gave you with the blue tablet, if a district has any campus that has a D or an F down the, down the category, so if you look at the school progress part B, because that's where we were at a 91, if you look down, down the roster there, if we had a D or an F, which you see Landry, River Chase, Sheffield, McQuarter all had Ds in that category, and that's our performance based on poverty, the highest you can be as a district in that category is an 89, if you have any campuses that have a D or an F in any domain. So our district, if you just calculated the numbers, because, you know, we're looking at them, we're like, woo-hoo, 91 for 70%, at 89 for 30%, we're going to be at a 90.4. We're going to be at an 89 because of campuses that have a D or an F. So as we set targets with our principals this year, we'll be really focused in on what is the target marker to get to 70%, and then what supports you need to, to reach that, that target. We are really pleased that over last year that we increased our number of A campuses and maintained our B campuses. You'll see tonight in the district plan that that's an indicator that we're looking at, our percentages of campuses. We have two that are a D. We have one campus right now that is at an F. We have asked for some tests to be rescored, that's at Sheffield. We are 3.5 progress points away from that campus being a D. So we have asked for TEA to look at, at some tests, but we are projecting right now that that campus will be an F for, for this year, at a 59. Next steps, we're waiting to hear the results of the appeal from the TEA regarding that English proficiency rating. We're waiting for TEA to complete quality assurance checks, looking at assessment corrections and rescores. Preliminary data will be released to us on August the 5th, and the accountability data tables, which give us a lot more information, will be released on August the 7th. We have a session for administrators at Learn More, Achieve More on August the 8th and the 9th for them to really dig into the data with our amazing data and accountability team. Thank you, Dr. Parker, for your leadership there. And then our A-through-F ratings will be available to the district on the 14th, and we will share them with you at that time. They'll be released to the public on the 15th. And then we already have set meetings for planning and data talks with principals to support their work this next year with regard to accountability. Any questions that I could answer for you?
Board members, do you have any questions?
I think this is very interesting and helpful for us, and to session, the session before the legislature said we were supposed to go dive deep into data. Is there an opportunity sometime for us to?
Absolutely.
You know, have that experience?
Yeah, yes, we will. But again, these are just preliminary.
Yeah, these are preliminary.
So we'll understand that, and so we'll get even more in-depth as we, as we get our final results, and we can, we can do so. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, say, with regard to the deep dive, the ERG resources that we'll be getting in late August after they're released publicly are really helpful for us to see where instructional versus curricular issues, so we'd be happy to share that with you. The other piece, just wanted to make sure you're all invited to Learn More, Achieve More. It's going to be next week, August 7th, 8th, and 9th at RL Turner High School. On the 7th, we're having a keynote speaker, Ann Grady is going to be speaking about resilience and for teachers and for students, and that's going to be at 8:30 in the morning and 1:00 in the afternoon. And then on Friday, Dr. Michael Sorrell, the president of Paul Quinn College, will be there, and he'll be speaking to us at 8:30 and 1:00. Would love to have you there. If you've never heard Dr. Sorrell speak, it is, it is absolutely worth listening. You will feel uplifted and your bucket filled, so.
We're running auditorium.
In the auditorium at RL Turner. We, if we haven't already, we'll send you a parking pass so that you can park back behind the cafeteria in the presenter parking because we anticipate parking will be very challenging. We're running shuttle buses from all over the district. We have food trucks and sandwich stations and all kinds of strolling magicians and fun experiences for teachers, so it should be a really great time of learning. About 500 sessions that we're offering in all different areas over those three days for our staff.
Dr. Chapman, anything else?
Yes, ma'am, we, we have one more. We'll have a construction update by Mr. Mulhoney.
Dr. Chapman, thank you for the opportunity to present a quick construction update. As you know, we've got four major construction projects running through different funding mechanisms this year, the summer. Starting out at Newman Smith off Josie, I'm sure everybody's been keeping an eye on that as we've torn up the front. What we did there is we've, just a quick face cleanup, if you would, kind of modernizing that front edge with an aluminum canopy. You saw what we did is we went in and demoed out some of the concrete, cleaned up the ADA ramps, and then we're also introducing a new sign that will come along the front of the school because the other one was kind of hidden back in the orn. because the other one was kind of hidden back in the awning there. So all of that's going to be open for school. It's going to be a rush to the finish line, but we will be, we are scheduled to be done by that August fifteenth, for the August nineteenth opening. It will be close, but we will get there. Some other items to keep in mind is that we did speak earlier, and we brought that amendment to you guys, for the side banners, those window dressings on either side of the awnings. We're working with our graphics department on that. We're seeing huge lead items, lead times on anything manufactured right now. Folks are just not stockpiling, and our vendors are not being cooperative as far as helping us rush the lines. So that's going to be more of a Christmas kind of project, and, but we'll update you as we go along on that. So what you see in the graphic right now is really our goal for opening. Seeing along some of the fun things we did, that's that green roof. It looks really small when it's up in the building, but when you pull it down and put it next to some cars, it starts to look really, really big. That was fun to watch that come down, and then you can see all that structural steel going up. That's all going to get wrapped in brick, kind of the light-colored brick to match the building, and then an aluminum finish on top of that. Next, heading over to Strickland, McLaughlin, Strickland, sorry, addition. Over there, we've got most of the structural steel going up. As scheduled, we won't be opening the additional part of the building for the start of school, but every, all the work inside of the main part of the building will be complete and ready for the start of school. There, you'll see the part in the back, and let me see if I've got a mouse. There it is. The part right in the back there is actually a storm shelter, so a lot of concrete work went into that. Four classrooms at the bottom, four classrooms on the top. And then as you come into this great double-volume space right here, you've got some maker spaces going along there. There, you can see where we, we did the maker space addition, with the classroom room addition at the back. We did do some cleanup work in the library. It doesn't meet our new vision for what the libraries look like. That's going to be modified and, and be done over Christmas into the spring break, ready for next year. But for right now, it is cleaned up, additional collaboration spaces added, and some AV technology added. Fun things along the way, like I mentioned, here's that large concrete wall that meets all the new storm shelter requirements with independent HVAC and electrical. And then again, that double-volume maker space that will be available, looking down with those stairs that come down the side there. Moving over to Landry. Landry's a, a bigger project. You'll see both the budget reflects that, so it's an addition and renovation project. That will be done, it's been done in two phases. So the addition will be open for the start of school, so those new classrooms will be made available. And we'll be keeping about eighteen classrooms in the core of the building offline to keep working throughout the school year. So we've worked with the campus to make sure that they have enough rooms to do what they need to do and be open. Library, cafeteria, dance rooms, et cetera, will all be available for the start of school. But we will have a lot of construction going on inside of the building as we go through the year. Oh, there's my map. So as you can see, the yellow block there is that, that renovation phase two. The pink blocks is the classroom addition we've added on this side, and then the gym addition, which will all be open for the start of the, the school year. This is our new typical classroom, new casework, hard surface in the front of the casework here, and then carpet at the back. And here is the, gym is looking much better than that. This picture's slightly dated, it's painted, and the lights are up. In fact, they're dropping floor at the moment. The outlier, multi-purpose building, that one's been a big challenge, bit of a slow start. We had some challenges with the, the soil and dirt that we were moving there, but the guys have worked well through that, and they're starting to drop concrete. So you can see the slab is going down, and the steel is starting to get stirred. There's a better picture. So here is a site plan. So the blue highlights all the concrete parking lots that we've poured. Like I said, the importance of that was getting that soil capped off. We were dealing with some soils that, that were concerning us, but we've dealt with all of that, that passed us now, so we can accelerate, oh, sorry, go full speed ahead on the building. The yellow shows the amount of concrete slab that's been stirred. On this side, we have our technology rooms in the new Technology Center NOC. On this side is the ballrooms and the commercial kitchen on the back, which you'll see right here, there we go. So here we can go, see the slab going in. That pit right there is kind of always a good hub. That shows you where that technology room's going to be. That hole, that lower floor there helps us map in all the electrical cables that are needed for the technology requirements. So if there's a change or something that happens, we've just got a false floor that can be lifted off, electrical changed, floor put back. So that's really exciting. There you can see, that's that, that hole again, where all the new technology server room and everything else will stand. This picture over here, you're standing in the ballroom area, looking back at the technology rooms. That steel's going to be standing there in about six weeks. All the steel should be up, and the guy should be working through the interior walls. So we're scheduled to be in that building come March to move our folks in, and by May to be occupied fully.
We've had good weather.
Yes.
Board members, are there any questions? Mr. Ramos?
The change in the soil or the, the difficulties that you encountered with, with regards to the soil, did that put us behind at all?
Yes, sir, it did.
About how much?
We're, we're still mapping out the full impact of it. Like we said, we've had some nice weather, so we've been able to make up some time, but we're looking at about sixty to sixty-five days.
Okay. And with the weather, do you think we can make up some of that time?
Well, I think the full impact was more like ninety days.
Oh, wow.
And that makeup, that sixty-five is what we're showing right now.
Okay. Thank you.
We had spoken about being in the building closer on the December date. Fortunately, because it's non-programming, we've been able to work with our technology departments and move that March move-in. So it limits the impact of the district.
Okay.
But still a delay.
Thank you.
All right.
So Dr. Chapman, it appears that it's six-thirty-six, and we've reached the end of our agenda for the pre-meeting. Thank y'all, and see you in a little bit.
It's regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at seven oh six P.M. on August first, two thousand nineteen. Welcome, everybody. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing as Morgan Eggers from the Branch Church provides a message followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Candace Valenzuela and the Pledge to the Texas Flag led by Tara Herbachek.
If you would all, please pray with me. Father, I am thankful for the people in this room and their heart for this community, and those in the community. God, we, I understand that, that teaching and the world of education is not the easiest one. But I'm grateful that these people accept that challenge and, and do so with grateful hearts, Father. So I pray that you are with them this year as they prepare mentally and physically for, for a new year, Father. We're, we're thankful for your love and for your grace that's new to us every day. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for each student. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all board members are present. So we have Ms. Herbachek, Mr. Matthews, Ms. Derrick, Mr. Shackman, Mr. Ramos, and Ms. Valenzuela. And we do constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Ladies and gentlemen, before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a district employee. Anyone wishing to speak may do so during Agenda Item Number Three, Audience for Guests. Please submit your request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table just outside the north entrance to the boardroom. You may place the completed form in the box provided on that same table, or you may present your completed form to Administrative Assistant Ms. Kim Castanon. Where'd she go? Oh, she's over here now. Okay. When the board addresses Agenda Item Number Three, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. We will now proceed with item number two. District announcements, Dr. Chapman?
Yes, first, we're going to get an update from PTA. Meredith Watson.
Hello. Dr. Chapman, President Klein, members of the board. My name is Meredith Watson, and I'm the CFB Council PTA President. Both council PTAs and local PTAs are looking forward to a great start of the school year, and we've already been hard at work this summer. Two weeks ago, twenty-eight local CFB PTA leaders attended a weekend-long training held by Texas PTA. Local leaders brought back valuable information from professionals and experts from all over the state, and we can't wait to see how they implement their great new ideas and energy into their PTAs this school year. I thought I'd take a moment to highlight some of the great back-to-school events some of our local PTAs are hosting and helping with. Blaylock Middle School PTA is hosting a dinner and din night for all the new Blaylock students on August eighth from six to seven, complete with an indoor picnic. McCoy Elementary PTA has been hosting popsicles in the park all summer for new students and existing students, so that they've been able to get to meet some of their fellow classmates. And for No Elementary PTA is hosting a Splash Bash on August ninth at the Farmers Branch Frog Pond, where they'll say bye to summer and hello to a new school year. And then as a part of our leadership development efforts, council PTA leaders are hosting two trainings in the fall. One is this upcoming Saturday, no, next Saturday, the tenth, for Treasurers and New Presidents from nine A.M. to noon. And then we'll host another Officer in Chair Training on September fourteenth from nine A.M. to noon, where local campus leaders can have the opportunity to learn more about their specific board positions. And then I'd like to invite everybody to our first council PTA meeting of the year, which is scheduled for Wednesday, September eleventh at six-thirty P.M. And it is open to everyone, so please come on, bye. And then, of course, I can't leave without talking about PTA membership. The new PTA year started today. So please make sure that everyone here has joined their local PTA, or two, or three, to show your support to our schools and our district. We did have a membership dip last year, and I'm not looking to continue that trend. So we look forward to a great year of partnering with our district and our collective goal on high achievement for each student. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, there's a few things. We have some artwork in front of us, and this was from an in-district competition we had for elementary through high school. So we're showcasing these, and we're grateful for fine arts allowing this to be displayed in front of us today. Also want to recognize three of our new rock stars. So we have Scott Monroe, which is our new Chief of Technology Officer. You met him earlier tonight. We welcome him. We also have Dr. Stephanie Humidis, who's our new Newman Smith High School Principal. We welcome her to her new role. And we also have Chad Hunter, which is the new principal of Vivian Field. So, so welcome our new administrators. Thank you so much for what you do. I was blessed to be able to go to the Region Ten Teacher of the Year event today. The judges made a mistake and didn't give our teachers the award, but we will in the future. But it was a great event. We celebrated both our elementary and our secondary principals, or, excuse me, teachers. This is the first time CFB has participated since the existence of it. So we're, we look forward, we're excited. We will win. I promise you, we're going to win the Regional Teacher of the Year, maybe next year, if not soon after. And then thank you for the board members for, for being at the event this morning, for the new higher, higher breakfast. Great, a little different atmosphere we were able to bring in, and we're grateful for the political leaders, leaders to be there and all of the, the businesses that were being able to be a part of that. I, I feel that the new teachers enjoyed it, and so that's just another, that's a start to what's coming with our opening of school ceremonies on October, or, excuse me, man, I'm off tonight, sorry. On August fourteenth, and our community pep rally on August fifteenth. So this is, this is it, it's here. And so we're excited to, to, to start the new year. We're going to have two special celebrations tonight. And so the first one we're going to kick off is with Mario De La Rosa.
Thank you, good evening, President Klein, members of the board, Dr. Chapman. I'm here this evening just to give you an update on safety and security. As we're all, we're aware, you've made safety and security a top priority for the district. And this evening, I just want to, as we start off this two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty calendar school year, I have some special guests I have, that I would like to introduce, and then they're going to talk a little bit about the safety initiatives. I have Ms. Ahmad from Principal at Good Elementary, Mr. Shulock, Assistant Principal at Creekview High School, and Mr. Elliot Reed, City of Carlton Emergency Management Coordinator. And they're going to share some of the good things that we're doing. They've been part of it, and I would like for them, instead of me telling you about them, share we have. They're going to talk about the emergency notification app, which is going to be distributed to all our employees. We're going to talk about the video doorbell intercom, a new system, safe entrances to our school. Our schools will no longer have an open door. And then we're going to talk a little bit about some of the very intensive training that we've been, that all our staff has been taking over the summer. The civilian response to active shooter events, that's a mandatory training for every staff member in the district, as well as incident management. And that's for our administrators and our campuses to learn how to handle an emergency. So we will start off with Ms. Ahmad, and.
Good evening, President Klein, Dr. Chapman, and members of the board. My name is Shinaj Ahmad, and I'm the principal of Ari Good Ivy Road School. There's a saying that peace of mind is priceless. Our Safety and Security Department has installed intercom and video features on all campuses, which allows students, staff, and families of our district to be able to enjoy just a little bit more of that peace of mind. When visitors come to a campus, they will see a sign that asks them to use the intercom to request entry. I'm sorry. Once the button is pressed, a bell will ring in the front office, and staff will be able to communicate with the visitors through an intercom and video system. After greeting the visitors and determining the purpose of, for entry, staff will be able to unlock the exterior doors to allow the visitors to come in to a secure vestibule. Visitors, visitors will then need to be buzzed in once again from this point. The new secure entry system gives back control to our front office staff by allowing them to screen who enters our buildings. Our families that have visited our campus over the summer have already given positive feedback about the new system and have expressed gratitude for making school security a top priority. As Dr. Chapman says, security is not always convenient. And although this new process may add a few extra steps or two, a few, two or few, for our entry process, the peace of mind will be priceless. So thank you for supporting in helping our schools be more safe for our students.
I'd like to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to come out tonight, as Mr., as, as, as Mr. De La Rosa said, thank you. My name is Elliot Reed, I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Carrollton. I'd like to thank the district for what's done this summer, which has taken training very, very seriously in several different aspects. Your staff has been very proactive, being able to reach out to us, involve us in those trainings. And two of the things we want to talk about tonight are, one, are the craze training that's going on this summer. As was mentioned, the training has been, was made mandatory for everyone, all staff members in this, in the district. It's unfortunate, this day and age, that we have to look at these things, but it's also one of the things we cannot ignore. This training is one of those out there that's been accredited and has been proven most effective. It's one of those things that teaches people the, the most current ways to be able to avoid, avoid the active shooters, be able to protect themselves in, in the event of it. We've had our officer Sergeant Knoll with the Police Department out with the staff here to help train this, this summer, and it's been very, very effective. So I want to applaud you for taking those steps, and we greatly appreciate that you're involving us in that and keeping us abreast of your planning activities. Second part I want to talk about tonight is Incident Command System training. This is part, is, is critical for your staff. Your staff, your safety staff has done several of these this year or this summer, and it's critical for us, because if we have a large-scale incident in Carrollton, the incident command system is how we will interact with you, it's how we will run that incident. We actually had a chance to put into practice during the summer with some, I believe, tornado warnings. At the time, I was, got a chance to call Mario, and then he had to make the tough call about being able to, I believe, issue a shelter-in-place order as the incident commander for the district. So these are things that are very effective when they, when you have proper training. Each campus has a team, each campus has an emergency plan. Those have been shared, shared to us at the city, which we very much appreciate, and allows us to be able to further or better interact with you and your, and your folks when we have an incident. So these trainings are critical. So I just want, want to come tonight and applaud you for doing these things, and always look forward to being able to continue this good partnership as we move forward.
Good evening, President Klein, Dr. Chapman, members of the board, and fellow community members. As Mr. De La Rosa said, my name is Lee. As Mr. Delarosa said, my name is Leon Shulock, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as one of the Assistant Principals at Creekview High School. Tonight, I'm going to highlight another tool that I, that we have, that I believe will be pivotal in ensuring and enhancing the safety and security of our staff and students. And that is a SMART button. It is a program that can be downloaded on devices that allows for two-way communication between administrators and staff. Messages are sent out automatically and pop up on all devices to ensure it will be seen. One feature that I like is that staff will also be able to send messages to the administrators should they have a safety concern. As Mr. Reed said, recently, we had threatening weather in the area, and our school was, all of our schools were placed in shelter-in-place due to threatening storms in the area, and this would have been a great time to use the tool. After the initial PA announcement, SMART button alerts could have been used to communicate with the staff and give them a current status, as well as what our district was monitoring and seeing in the area. They could have given an estimated time of how much longer they feel that we would have been in shelter, and it could have also been sent out to ask for any students they feel were upset, that may need immediate counseling support for their emotional well-being should, when the shelter was lifted. And as we know, the emotional well-being of our students being very important, I think that would be a great tool. By using the SMART button, it helps ease all those involved in crises, crises, and from not having to hear PA announcements that may startle. It also makes staff feel more comfortable, because they have been kept in constant communication, which in turn places them at ease and allows them to focus on keeping the students in a better place. Thank you for allowing us to have this tool.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? These are just, these are just three things, and we're working on many more initiatives, safety-related initiatives to ensure the safety, and it's in ongoing progress, and I'll be back to share more of the updates and new things we're working on. Any questions?
Sally? Mr. Delarosa, for the SMART, or the Secure Entry System, is that in place at all campuses going back into the start of school?
Yes, ma'am, it is. It'll be available for all our campuses for the front entrance, for the first day of school.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then, the CRAZE training was for all 3,600 employees. That's not a state mandate, that's a CFB mandated training, and it's going to...
Yes, sir. We've already started last week, and this coming week will be the rest of, the bulk of most of the teachers and administrators and everybody else. We have a whole week of sessions to make sure that they attend one of them. It's a three-hour training.
Mr. Delarosa, and we went to Good Elementary today, and Channel 8's going to run a story on our safety and security and show what we're doing that many other districts are not, and so, we hope the story's good tonight, we'll see.
So, does the Ring Doorbell School Entry type thing include video?
Yes, and it's live video, it's not recording, but it's just like the Ring, like at the residences, you know, you ring the doorbell.
So, it's not just audio, which is good. Board members, any other questions? Okay. Dr. Chapman, thank you.
Mr. Delarosa.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have a wonderful project that the Operations Department put together, and Malcolm's going to walk through that real quick. We went to a luncheon yesterday and celebrated the winner and ate with all the maintenance guys, and so we thought it'd be a great opportunity for Malcolm to show what he implemented over the summer months.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, members of the board. Under the leadership of Victor Meltz, and the Facility Maintenance Guys have done an incredible job. They processed almost 18,000 work orders this year, which is up year-over-year for the last three years. And part of that was then to start stretching their legs a little bit and seeing what else, what else they're looking for, not just onesies, twosies, but what ideas do they have in their heads. So, with Victor's leadership, we decided to run a competition, because those guys are competitive by nature, and why not? So, we did the maintenance projects competition, which allowed them to form teams, and the guys directed these projects. These weren't dictated down from anybody, this came up from the ground up. What ideas do they have walking around? And the first guys out were the electricians, who went over to Perry, and they decided to take on the Perry Lights. So, they upgraded the LED lights from the old light system to LEDs at Perry for about a third of commercial rate. Had we gone out to market for this project, being about $25-plus thousand, the guys did it for less than 10. Absolutely phenomenal. They picked the fixtures, they inspected, they bought, obviously, everything...
And the energy usage will be less.
Two-thirds less, ma'am. Again, and right, I said, the guys did the whole lot. They had to scope their own projects, they had to go shop the fixtures, that, obviously, everything came back to Victor and myself, but it was all driven, motivated by them. Next along, Polk, Polk Middle School. We've been flooding Polk, we've got some serious concrete issues. We've got two journeyman plumbers on staff now, and these guys took this challenge on. They said, like, enough is enough, we've got to put a stop to this. And so, they went under the building, found some additional drainage capacity there, burrowed underneath, ran about 250 pipe, linear field of pipe under the building, cut the concrete, tore it all up. You can see these new drains that they installed, worked with the concrete contractor to form it all back, but again, completely run by our great folks in the Plumbing Department. HVAC doesn't have the flashy construction side of it. These guys took on the controls, which we all know is vital to the operation of our schools. So, one of the things Victor's done is he's brought on a second HVAC controls guy who's a programmer. So, that combined with Terry Van den Berg's experience, these guys went to town asking seven strategic questions of every HVAC unit every morning. Is your compressor running? Is your fan running? And then, they overlaid, because of course, we've got 6,000 HVAC units running multiple systems, overlaid their software over ours to do that diagnosis every morning, so that by 9:00, we know what our HVAC units are doing. So, by 3:00, we're not waiting for the, it's hot, it's cold complaints, we're moving ahead of that. So, they wrote that software. This will also help with the three CP initiative to curb some of our peak use. We'll see how that rolls out, but those guys did a great job. So, really excited to see how that rolls out this next school year. Our Paint Department took on For No. They, the orange and the brick is a, was, and like I said, these were dictated by our guys, so we didn't go in and say, "This is your priority, this is what you have to do." We wanted them to come back with ideas. They were concerned about the multiple signage, there was this older sign kind of hidden by the canopy, and an additional sign on the corner of the building. They cleaned all those things up, painted it down to a more standard gray color that's uniform with the district. Then, raising the bar even higher, were our Carpentry Guys. They heard about Dr. Chapman's Library Initiative, and they wanted to be a part of it. So, our carpenter, Martin Fletcher, got involved and partnered with Central Elementary to build a reading corner. So, again, every piece here is cut, formed, painted by the guys. They were not allowed to get credit for other people's work, there wasn't a pick-from-a-catalog situation. So, they formed every bit of that, cut every piece of wood. These laminate countertops, they actually took plywood, glued it up, so it's got this beautiful banding in it, and then polished the whole thing. So, that really left us in a pickle, because I said it was a competition, so there had to be a winner. And being rather annoyed at the guys who were raising the bar way too high for me, we have one outstanding project, which ended up at Polk. Sorry, I forgot about Grounds. Sorry, guys. Grounds took on Newman Smith Softball. We know that Newman Softball, the infield here was really struggling. It's been patched, 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 we just couldn't bite off enough to get it completely fixed. The guys came in, they dug out all the weeds, they laid down new sod, cleaned up the infield, field, completely outstanding job. But our winner was the Polk Panther. So, not so much a maintenance project, but an act of love, if nothing else, and a piece of art. It started out part of the plumbing project, because we were going to move some stuff around the front, and the guys wanted to dress up the front of the school again. Then, that took its own legs, and it was outside, then it was inside, then they had to form it, what's it going to stand on? And again, Victor and I are just bystanders at this point. We're going, "Guys, take on the challenge, figure it out." So, then, one of the Maintenance Guys' sons, we used AutoCAD, cut down, it's 103 individual pieces that they broke down, cut out of steel, welded it up together. Originally, it was going to be powder-coated, then the artist said, "No, he didn't want that finish." So, again, back to the drawing board, that's when it moved inside. Grounds Guys assisted, they found the boulders, built the garden inside, and that's what you see as the finished product today. Of course, all these things have great run-ons, and over at Polk, we were actually able, we did a markup, I'm sorry, it's a little small, I thought you could see it. There's a cardboard version of the Panther, and the engineering department kids want to have a copy of it. So, they're going to take it, and they're going to be able to use it, study it, look at the angles, look at the shapes that went into it, how it was formed. And then, I think there's some other initiatives that the campus has got to try and build some team spirit. Kelly, would you mind?
Good evening. My name's Kelly O'Sullivan, and I am the proud principal at Ted Polk Middle School. We are so grateful to have received, been the recipients of just the great projects that occurred, and you can see, the picture doesn't do it justice. This is a life-sized Panther in the foyer, and like Malcolm said, next to it, the prototype. Our engineering teacher and students are already chomping at the bit to get in there and to learn and to deconstruct it and find out how to do this, and so, it's so meaningful on so many different levels. So far, ideas coming our way are, we're going to have a contest to name this great Panther that has already become a tradition and just a part of the fabric of Polk. Along with it, ideas are coming my way, being presented every day by students, by staff. Students have an opportunity to go by and pat the paw for good luck on test day. Having their picture made for great character, to get in front of the Panther and have their picture made for those great character and behaviors that we've seen, for having a positive day, get it positive. And then, again, just the overall impact that it's had on culture, school spirit, as soon as you enter the building. Make no mistake, as soon as I enter that building every day and I cross those grates and those drains, I'm going to be thankful every single day. But when you step in the lobby and you see this, it's magnificent, so we invite everybody to come by and take a picture with our Panther, and hopefully, we'll have the name up soon and a plaque saying how grateful we are for the creators of this. Thank you, Mel.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, for the opportunity to celebrate our Maintenance Folks, and a big shout-out to our guys who live and breathe CFB every day. We're so proud of them.
You know, I got to, I got to give kudos to Malcolm and his team, because we're, you know, as we're building our new CFB way, you know, one of the key components that we're looking at is, is culture. And culture can be so many things. It can be from the warehouse that we're providing, backpacks and clothing and all that for the students in the near future, to developing the whole child, what Rochelle's doing with, with After the Bell and feeding dinner to our kids, to be the champion, and we're going to be providing a meal for every kid before they go home on 10 campuses next year, to looking at who we are and what we are, what we represent, how we market ourselves, and just taking great pride in our district. And so, you're going to see some major challenges that are coming ahead, and you're going to see a little change, but it's going to be just, just honing in on who we are and what we're about. And so, as the principals start to look at, "How can I spice it up my campus? How can I make my, my front entrance, my library, my cafeteria look better?" The three key components to where most of our parents go. How are we, how are we illustrating who we are? How are we telling people the great things that we're doing internally, and it shows externally as well? So, we're excited. I know that under the Leadership Development Team, Ms. Smith, and what we were calling the Chief of School Leaders, now it's the Development, Leadership Development Team, and their emphasis is going to be on culture, and how we treat people, and how we look, and how we're operating. And so, you're going to see a really nice touch of who CFB is all about, and so, we're very excited, and we can't wait for you to start to see the changes, and as well as our community, so. Thank you, Malcolm. We appreciate all that you're doing, you're doing a phenomenal job, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. So, in addition to work orders, the Maintenance Guys are all about thinking ahead and thinking outside the box, and we appreciate that. We appreciate Mr. Delarosa and your team and the City of Carrollton for, you know, helping us provide the safety we desperately want for our kids. And with that, anything else?
You know, and I, and I don't want to knock, you know, safety and security has been tremendous since Malcolm, I mean, since Mario's arrival, and I just cannot thank Carrollton for everything that they've done through our training and their partnerships and working hand-in-hand with us. It's, it's just been incredible, and so, we're blessed and we're grateful for that partnership, and grateful for Mario and what you're doing, and just the vast differences we've already made, and with the customized emergency plans on every campus and walking through that, and our SRP programs, let alone the few things that we talked about here today, it's just, they're doing a tremendous job. They really are.
And thank you to our new leaders that are taking on new campuses and IT. And then, also, a great big thank you to the PTA and Ms. Watson for coming and presenting on August 1st, when you could have been sitting around with your feet up somewhere. So, with that, appears that we're about ready to take a brief recess. It's 7:35, so we'll take a recess until 7:45 p.m. Thank you. This meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Ranch ISD Board of Trustees is called back to order at 7:48 p.m. The next item on the agenda is the Audience for Guests. Ms. Kastenon, are there any Audience for Guests this evening?
No.
So, that takes us to item number four, Consent Agenda. We will, the Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all Consent Agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda at this time? Well, I don't see any, so, Ms. Derrick, were you going to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
With the one amendment for four DDs, please.
With the one amendment for four DDs.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Derrick. We have a second by Mr. Vatchek. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, so, thank you. Item number four, I mean, five, non-action items for discussion. Dr. Chapman, District and Campus Improvement Plan.
Yes, ma'am. So, at this time, Dr. Warlock's going to walk through the District and the Campus Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, President Klein, and members of the board. We're going to do a brief overview of our district plan for the 2019-20 school year and share a little bit of information about how that was constructed and approved by our District Improvement Council. Our District Improvement Council's purpose is to serve as an advisory board to the Superintendent Administration and reviews different items like our student dress code, our Code of Conduct, professional development that would be conducted school-wide, and then they're also instrumental in creating our district plan and then approving that to recommend to the Board of Trustees. It is comprised of members from all over the district, so we have a diverse representation of teachers from all of our campuses, as well as central administration. We have central administrators that are non-voting members of the District Improvement Council, and then we also have parents and community and business partners. I gave you a copy of our operating procedures, which outlines how many of our parents and business partners that we have sitting on the District Improvement Council, and we're currently in the process of inviting those members to participate for the 2019-20 school year. According to board policy, we meet six times per year, and we've operated, operated under the operating procedures that you have in front of you this year. We really believe that our district plan should connect the dots. We have a strategic plan that the board has created and approved, which includes our mission, our vision, our goal, and our four guiding objectives, and from that flows our district plan, then our campus plans are aligned to that, and then individual work plans flow out of the campus plan, so that all of the work in the district is aligned to our one goal of high achievement for each students and guided by our four objectives. Our vision for our district is learn more, achieve more, and our mission is continuous improvement. We have one goal in CFB, and that's high achievement for each student, which, with four objectives that continuously guide our work. We want to continuously improve student learning, continuously improve the learning environment, and that includes both the facilities, the physical plant, and the social-emotional environment for students, continuously improve operational effectiveness, and continuously improve our community support. And if we have those four things working in tandem, we move to the goal of high achievement. We began our district improvement process with a comprehensive... We began our district improvement process with a comprehensive needs assessment, knowing that if we're going to have solutions to, for problems, we need to have a really firm understanding of what the problem is. So we did a comprehensive needs assessment in 2017-18, and then our District Improvement Council revisited that CNA to devise the plan for 2019-20. In previous years, these were all of the performance measures that we tracked in our district improvement plan. And you can't read them all, and that's okay. The point is just, there's a lot. And so we know that when we're tracking a lot of different pieces, that we might not be focusing on what's most important. And so the District Improvement Council has approved reducing the performance measures that we track as a district for this upcoming year. Really focusing in on what is our TEA state rating, the percentage of campuses that earn an A or B in the accountability system, the percentage of students who are reading at meets grade level by third grade. We know this is a critical indicator for long-term success is the functional literacy of students at third grade when we shift from learning to read to reading to learn. Our eighth grade meets at science. With the rise of STEM professions and the importance of science in the job market right now, we see a wide range of job openings predominantly in the healthcare and technology fields that connect to our, our ability to prepare our students for STEM fields. That also corresponds with our Algebra I meets grade level. College readiness is a push for us, so looking at our students who are scoring 110-plus on the reading math section of the SAT is that is our college ready without remediation. And knowing the importance of pre-K to early literacy, we want to focus on our pre-K enrollment and making sure that every child who's eligible for pre-K services in Carrollton Farmers Branch is enrolled in our schools. We want to make sure that our pre-K is preparing students for kindergarten so that they have a solid foundation and are excited about school. And then finally, our graduation rate and post-secondary enrollment, looking at our students who are going on to two, four-year schools, military also. So those will be the performance measures that we're tracking as we move forward this year. We have several strategies with many, many tactical steps underneath each of those. So as we look at continuously improving student learning, our big focused levers that we want to concentrate on are improving the instructional core, which means improving the teacher's knowledge and skills, improving the student and how they interact with content and the level and rigor of content, improving our systems of feedback and observation. So that means administrators observing and giving feedback to teachers, coaches, instructional coaches working and giving feedback to teachers. We know that we improve with dollops and dollops of feedback. We also want to improve our data-informed decision-making. So we continue to look at how we get better data protoc, at our data protocols and understanding the data that we have to make decisions about students. And then finally, we want to continue to increase our innovative programming and digital learning so that students have tools for the 21st century. Under the learning environment, our big strategies, and you heard just great celebrations from Mr. De La Rosa's department this evening, but we want to continue to ensure the safety and security of every child in CFB ISD. And we want to meet their physical and emotional needs. So with strategies like building our mindfulness, our counseling team does excellent work. We've expanded our behavioral support team this year with some additional title funding that was provided. So those strategies to meet the physical and emotional needs of children. And then you heard just celebrations from Malcolm's team tonight too about really improving in our effective learning facilities. That corresponds with the bonds, the TIF, all of that, strategies and tactics listed there. Continuously improving our operational effectiveness is our third strategy. And this relates to our human resources management. Putting the best teacher that we can find and retaining that teacher and growing that teacher is so critical to the long-term success of our school district. So we want to continue to improve our human resources management so that we have the most talented, diverse group of applicants that we can find. We want to continuously improve our financial management. Our financial, our business team is amazing. So we talk about not wasting a paperclip, and we want to really be as efficient as we can with the resources, improving our business operations so that we're streamlined as possible. And then finally, working with Mr. Monroe has brought great ideas about improving our technology infrastructure and operations. And we're excited about the possibilities that a new NOC will bring in doing that. Finally, continuously improving community support. We have a customer service initiative that our personnel team with Dr. Coleman's leadership has really been working to develop along with this mindset across the entire district. We want to be promoting CFB through our communications, our ambassadors programs, sharing accolades, the great things that are happening. We want people to be able to talk about those and then building our brand awareness and loyalty. So all of those are pieces that are big strategies under improving community support with many, many, many little steps beneath them. Our next steps that our board and public should expect to see coming up with regard to our district plan, we will have parents and community members that we are currently in the process of inviting. Campus principals have identified those for us to sit on our 19-20 District Improvement Council. Once our TEA releases our accountability results, we'll be reviewing data. You'll notice in the district plan that you received, there's some incomplete portions. Once we get our updated data, then we will review and then recommend targets for our performance under each of those data indicators. And then our District Improvement Council will review those recommendations, revise them, and then they will vote to approve amendments to our district plan at our September meetings for the DIC. And then we'll bring that plan back to you, the Board of Trustees, in October and do an update to you on where we are. We want the plan to be a living, breathing document. We make changes and adjustments as needed as we go forward. Also, this fall concurrently, we'll begin, we're, we've had this Vision 2020. Well, that's here, so we're beginning our next steps with a collaborative Vision 2030. So we'll be talking about the next steps of where we go in CFB. That is our current plan, and then our campus plans follow behind the district plan, each one aligned to the steps that we outlined here tonight. Any questions that you might have?
Thank you, Dr. Warnock. Board members, are there? Well, I will just comment that I noticed that we haven't usually done this in August, Dr. Chapman.
We have, sure, you know.
I think it's brilliant.
Yeah, so, so state law requires a district to submit their campus and district improvement plans in November. That's, that's the law, and, and many districts do that. I don't understand that, because if we're going to have a plan in place, why are you going to have it approved by your Board of Trustees for implementation when the half of the year is already over? And so one of our pushes has been to change the timeline and, and to have the plan in place in June and then have, since we do not have a July board meeting, and have the board approve the, the plan in August before the kids get, get back so we know what our, what our guide is and where we're driving that ship. So we've changed it from fall approval to before kids get started. So we are, we're on track and we're running in a, in a straight and narrow. So that's why it's been moved to, to August.
And could you also give a sneak preview of your collaborative Vision 2030 process?
Sure, so.
The board and the, what we're looking for from the community?
Yes, ma'am. So, so on August 13th at 1:30 PM, the, the administration's going to start the process of building the foundation of, you know, one district goal, X amount of objectives, or X amount of, of goals and one objective. How is that going to, to lay out? What are the emphasis that we're going to be bringing to the table? Then on September 9th at fi, at 6 o'clock, the Board of Trustees will start the process of building the core board beliefs. What are your core board beliefs when it comes to safety and security and curriculum, facilities, finance, et cetera? You're going to build the framework for how we're going to move forward in developing multiple committees. For however many board core beliefs that you have, then we're going to develop community leaders to participate, or let me say, not leaders, stakeholders to participate in developing those out. So if we have seven, let's say, seven objectives, then we're going to have seven committees, and then we're going to walk through that. We're going to meet every month, starting in October, 5:30 to 8:30, we'll provide dinner. All the way through February, we'll have a semi-rough draft. In March, the administration will then take that plan, collaborative Vision 2030, massage it, look at it, build it out for approval by the Board of Trustees on April 2020.
I can't believe 2020 will be here so fast.
2020 is almost here.
So, board members, are there any questions about what Dr. Warnock presented or where we're going with our future? Thank you. I think it's all very exciting, and I like seeing the developments that are occurring. So that takes us to 5B.
Yes, so, so budget update, 2019-20.
Good evening. We're here to present our, our first look at our 19-20 resource allocation. We first want to take a step back and look at how 18-19, what we're projecting, 18-19 will look. As you know, for 18-19, we adopted a $3.5 million deficit. Right now, our revenues are trending to have a $9.5 million positive variance. Majority of that is in our local revenue, which we projected to have a little bit more in taxes collected. And we had a, a pretty large variance in our interest income that we've, we've earned with our funds as well. One of the unique items in our revenue section is the other revenue, the $2 million. That's related to the sale of the NOC. As we look at kind of our expenditures, right now, we're projecting our positive variance of about $4.3 million. With that, we're planning to have an operating transfer out of $6.5 million. This is very similar to the $4 million we transferred out a few years ago for our technology, where we were planning to buy our, our, update our phone system. And so that's kind of the same mechanism to kind of address the things that, that may not be in our, our bond program. And so even with that change, even with that transfer out, we think we'll have about $3.7 million surplus in the general fund for 18-19. These are still, there's still a lot of moving parts, but this is our best estimate as of today. As we look at House Bill 3, we want to take a quick look at our overview. One of the main things on, for House Bill 3 is that it com, it set a compressed tax rate, which will be $1.68, $1.6835, which is down from $1.17. Basic allotment increased from $5140 to $6160. It also modified the compensatory education allotment. And it also created a new early education allotment. It had a small adjustment to the special education mainstream. It created a dyslexia allotment, and it expanded the career and technology allotment to grades seven and eight. And also, House Bill 3 also repealed the cost of education index, the gifted and talented allotment. Even though it eliminated the gifted and talented allotment, we're still required to provide gifted and talented services. And so we'll still have to track those and report that to TEA. It also repealed the hospital allotment and the staff allotment. It added a bilingual language. And then teacher compensation, we'll talk about a little bit later. It's based on the, the basic allotment gain that you receive through House Bill 3. And recapture, in, in the old law, it went from a wealth per student to what they call now as excess local revenue. And then state funding calculation, you know, before in old law, it was based on prior year values. And now state funding will be calculated on current year values. A thing that we have to pay attention to with House Bill 3 is the Formula Transition Grant. It says, "School districts and open enrollment charter schools are entitled to receive the lesser of 103% of the MNO funding they would have received under old law or 128% of the state average MNO funding under old law." For school years ending in odd years, school districts and charter schools receive the better of 18-19 or 2020, 2021 under old law. The Formula Grant, Formula Transition Grant is set to expire at the end of the 23-24 school year. And right now, with our current estimates, CFB is expected to receive about $21.6 million. And so we, that, at the end of 23-24, that will disappear. And so there's still a lot of guidance, guidance to come from TEA. TA has started releasing a series of videos, and they'll release videos through November 14th on various topics of the House Bill 3. They recently released a video on the compensatory education allotment. Even in that video, they said throughout the 19-20 school year, they will revise the rules and, and update us. And so it's, it's not fully, they don't have all the information for, for compensatory education. We'll get more information on teacher incentive allotment, mentor programs, college prep assessment reimbursement, certification examinations, then college career and military readiness allotment. Another thing that House Bill 3 changed is the spending requirements. It had changes to the special education, career and tech, compensatory education, and bilingual. All these previously had spending rates of 52% to 58%, and now it's a uniform 55%. And also a change that's coming through House Bill 3 is when we do our 19-20 audit, there'll be a report in the, in the financials that we'll have to, we'll have to record or have to tell how we spend our allotment. And just to give you kind of an idea of, of breakdown of how this would work, for compensatory education, under old law, we received about $19.5 million. And at a, we have to spend 52% of that, which is about $10.1 million. Under House Bill 3, we received in, increased funding of 25.6. And, but as you look at the 55% requirement, we, we have to spend $14.1 million. And so you can see, from 10.1 to 14.1, we have to spend about $4 million more. Even though we got a large increase from House Bill 3, there's some areas where you have to specifically spend that, those funds. And even like bilingual education, under old law, we, we got a $3.9 million. And at 52%, we have to spend about $2 million. House Bill 3, we got an increase in bilingual education of 5.1. And for the 55%, we have to spend about 2.8. So we have to spend another $700,000 in, in these supplemental programs. And kind of the unique thing about the bilingual education allotment, you can't spend it on teacher salaries. You can spend it on stipends, but it has to be supplemental.
Property tax reform, and this was a major part of the legislative session. And so we just wanted to cover again how our maintenance and operation tax rate was basically reset. And it is now divided into funding tiers, so we're going to talk about those, these tiers. The first is Tier 1, and that is based upon the first dollar of tax effort compressed to 93%. So the first tier is 93 pennies, and that's what's used to calculate the district share of Tier 1. So that's the first layer of our tax rate. Then we get into what's called the enrichment tax rate, and that's our golden and our copper pennies. Our, our golden pennies shifted, so we have two additional that were copper. So we have eight pennies. They're no longer tied to the Austin ISD yield. And when we talk about them being tied to a yield, those are the Tier 2 enrichment funds that the state provides to bring you up to that level if you're not already yielding that on your tax base. We are under that level typically, so we do receive state funding for Tier 2 enrichment. They are no longer tying that to Austin ISD yield, so there's the formula now, so it's a greater of calculation. And then the copper pennies, we are allowed up to nine copper pennies. So this is Tier 2 Level 1 and Tier 2 Level 2, or these pennies are also referred to. When you look at the copper pennies, we now have compression on these pennies. So we have compression at the first level, and we have compression on copper, which we haven't had in the past. And the way they calculate that compression is to look at the old yield versus the new yield. And when we talk about old and new, the old law, what the yield was, and now what the new law is under House Bill 3. And so they look at that ratio, and that's multiplied by the nine pennies to compress those pennies down. So anytime the yield changes, those copper pennies will be compressed. So that's how those are going to work for us, looking at House Bill 3. Also, you know, we were used to all districts having the same maximum MNO tax rate that they could access. Now, that's a formula, and so the maximum tax rate is 17 cents above the product of the district's maximum compressed tax rate multiplied by a dollar. So it's going to vary from district to district. As we get further away from districts being at $1.17, and then next year, depending on what the state does on a formula piece, we'll start seeing varying maximum compressed, or maximum rates that districts can adopt. As we talk about compression now, and the two levels of compression, both on Tier 1 and on Tier 2 on the copper pennies. both on tier one and on tier two on the copper pennies, when you've heard about that we're going to be limited to two and a half value, two and a half percent growth on our property values, the way they're going to do that is through an additional compression on that tier one level. So that 93 pennies is going to go down, depending on what your property value growth does. However, in 2021, the formula that was written into the bill won't really compress it to the extent that they would think you would if you have larger than two and a half percent growth. So we think there could be some commissioner rulings and interpretations to change that. So we're waiting to hear about that. But right now, it would probably compress to at least 9165 on that 93 pennies. If we have a larger growth, it could be even further if they make an adjustment. But that was the intent, that that's where they're going to control the two and a half percent growth, is in that tier one portion of your tax rate. So that's how that's going to work. We don't have to worry about that for 1920, because they're basically calculating and telling you if you were at $1.17, this is where you should be. And then we'll work into it as we get out of the 1920 year. So for general fund, then if you look at our tax rate, where we were at a dollar, we're now at 93 cents. And again, that's the tier one rate. We have eight golden pennies now instead of six. Again, those are golden because there's no repayment that we have to make to the state on those tax collections. And the state also provides additional funding on that, on those pennies. And then the copper pennies, there's also additional state funding on those, except for the level that the yield on those is much lower. And so we don't get any funds. We actually have a recapture on those copper pennies. So if you look, our tax rate that we would be proposing would be $1.6835. For 1920, down from $1.17. And this is just the maintenance and operation tax rate only. So if you look at an average residence, and here we're looking at an average taxable value, where the home went from 224,146 up to 240,801, which is about a 7.4% growth in their value. Their tax rate would drop by $16.60. We did get our certified values, and it varies between Dallas and Denton Counties. Denton's County's average growth rate was slightly higher than Denton's. So it just really depends on where you live, where that's going to fall. But this is just an average, sort of in between what we've seen happening in Dallas and Denton.
And now as we look at our 1920 budget, like I said, for 1819, we adopted a $3.5 million deficit. For 1920, we will propose a balanced budget. If we had, if we had realized the $3.5 million deficit, our fund balance for 1819 would have been about 96.7. And so as you can see in our tax revenue, even though our property values went up because of the compression in our tax rate, we're projected to have less tax revenue than we did in 1819. Our state revenue will go up a little, go up a little bit. So we think we'll have revenue of about $94.4 million. On the expenditure side, you can see recapture is only going to go up a slight bit. And we think our total expenditures will be about $94.4 million. And based on what we, what we think we're in 1819, and if we have a balanced budget for 1920, our projected fund balance will be 104, about $104 million. Some of our major additions to the budget, compensation is always our biggest driver of the budget. Right now, we think that'll be about $9 million of the total cost of the raise. We added full day pre-K at Carrollton and McLaughlin Strickland. Code for the Future, we added at Davis and Lavaeta. We decided to expand our Avid program. Property and casualty insurance has a premium increase again this year. We put in the budget reservations for new spending requirements that we talked about before with compensatory education, and also reservations for capital improvements that are not included in the bond program. At House Bill 3, on the compensation side, it requires districts to use 30% of the increase per average daily attendance in the basic allotment to increase compensation of full-time employees that are not administrators. 75% of that 30% is to be used to increase compensation of classroom teachers, nurses, counselors, and librarians, prioritizing differentiated compensation for classroom teachers with more than five years of experience. Based on our cash calculations of our 1920 revenue versus our 1819, the gain that we'll have to, the raise that we'll have to provide for all staff less administrators is about $7.1 million. The 75% of the 30% gain is about 5.3% that we have to provide to teachers, librarians, nurses, and counselors. And the last line you see there, the 5.8 million, that's what the raise, that's what we're estimating that the raise will cost the district for 18, for 1920. And so the 5.8 exceeds the 5.3, so we have met the requirements of House Bill 3. This is just further breaks down the compensation. You can see for teachers, librarians, and nurses, we're estimating that there will be a 5 and a 6 and a quarter percent increase. These are only general fund employees. There's about 1,800 employees in that category. Hourly employees will receive a 4% increase, which is about 887 employees. Other positions will receive 3.5%. And there's about 216. And administrators will receive a 3.5% increase as well, which is about 166. Classroom teachers, full-time librarians, full-time counselors, and full-time nurses, increase will be effective the first day of their 1920 assignment. All other employees' pay increase will be effective August 1st, 2019. This is just further illustrates the sample teacher. The new starting teacher for our first year, just right out of college, will be $55,735. A teacher, a new teacher last year made $53,635. They will receive a 5% increase, which totals to $2,682. And their 1920 salary will be $56,317. And you can see some other scenarios, a year six teacher and a year 11 teacher. And at the very bottom, a 21-year teacher for 1819 made $62,970. They will receive 6 and a quarter percent increase, which is $3,932. And their 1920 salary will be $66,838.
I just want to add with this proposal, you can see a brand-new teacher at $55,735. That's up from $53,635 last year, $2,100. So we're really excited about that starting point for our teachers. We've been able to move in front of, Lewisville has been in front of us for new teacher pay. And so we've actually, they just posted their structure, and they're going to be at 54.5. So we're happy that we'll potentially move in front of them. And we remain ahead of several other districts that we also monitor. And as soon as we get all of the information in, we'll get that to you. But as far as what's been published so far, we know that our new teacher pay will be ahead of Capel, Plano, Denton, Dallas, and Frisco at a minimum for our beginning teacher. So we're excited about that opportunity.
And to kind of further break down of the teacher raise, there will be about 578 teachers that would receive between $2,600 and $3,000. There will be about 878 teachers that would receive between $3,000 and $4,000. There's 126 teachers that would receive between $4,000 and $5,000, and about 19 teachers that would get a raise of greater than $5,000. Another bill we wanted to bring your attention to is-
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you were talking about the beginning, the new teacher salaries. What about the teacher that's been here 20 years? How do we compare to other districts?
Those have been really, we've seen all different types of proposals, where some are stair stepping up multiple levels to get to the 20-year. Some are just flat. And we've also seen districts now that, how did July 1 start? And they had to go ahead and adopt that they're coming back now with proposals-
Amendments.
-to amend. So we can't really tell where we're at yet on the other grades. But it seems like most are falling between two and a half and three and a half percent on their raises, with some sort of increment for the greater than five years for teachers. So we'll get that as soon as we see final numbers.
And I know originally, districts were talking about stipends. But what Dr. Chapman explained is that the TEA said no stipend?
They specifically said that that would not qualify. It could not be income that could, that was temporary, basically. It had to be, that was not their intent of the law, was to be able to give something that you could take away.
Thank you.
Even though we're using temporary funds.
Temporary funds. Yeah, I was wondering in two years, what happens?
Right.
And the other bill we wanted to bring your attention to was Senate Bill 12. The legislature wanted to put more money into TRS to make it more financially sound. And so Senate Bill 12, the state contribution for 1920 will go up from 6.8 to 7.5. And you can see that it's going to go up gradually. And then in 2023, it will be eight and a quarter in employee. Current contribution is 7.7. And 2021, I mean, 2122, the contribution will go up to eight. And then in 2023, it'll go up to eight and a quarter. And then the district's current contribution is 1.5%. And starting in 2021, it'll go up 0.1% each year until '24, '25, well, it'll be 2%.
So as we look to what future considerations we need to monitor, you know, as Moak Casey has presented across the state, they've just cautioned that there's likely a messy session on the way with the 87th legislative session with items unrelated to public education, but that could have an impact on how that session aligns for future funding for school districts. And with us, we just want to monitor that because, you know, this is being called the new funding cliff for certain districts who are receiving this formula transition grant, which is intended to bridge the old funding system with the new funding system. But that's something that as we attend events and our, you know, are promoting public education, that we need to keep that on the forefront of how this transition grant funding is going to be addressed, because it's a large, large impact on the district. So we'll keep monitoring that and keep that in mind as we move forward. Our next steps in terms of this process is some other things that were implemented that we'll be working on and be bringing to you is full day pre-K was part of House Bill 3, but because of the timing, they gave districts the ability to ask for an exemption. We will be requesting that exemption when it becomes available. Right now, they're saying likely in January 2020. But we want to begin immediately preparing and planning for what full day pre-K would look like district-wide at CFP. So that'll be a part of our major planning processes in 1920. And another big piece of House Bill 3 is these additional spending requirements and coming up with how we are going to spend those funds, compensatory education being one of the large increases for CFP. And that all has to be spent on supplemental services for economically disadvantaged students to close the gap. And so we are going to be earmarking money for that based on our current estimates. But as they define the census blocks and how that's going to work, our numbers are going to change. But we want to make sure we have that, those funds set aside so that we can start working towards that requirement. So we'll continue to monitor those. In terms of the budget adoption process, right now, the comptroller has released the truth and taxation guidelines that we need to use. And so we're working through our calculations and getting ready for our public notice that we'll be posting for our budget hearing and our tax rate adoption. We are targeting to get that in the paper on August 9th to meet all of our legal requirements. We'll continue to monitor what TEA is ruling upon and releasing. They're releasing videos weekly. And if you get a chance, I've watched all of them. So far, the best one has been the one on recapture. It's only 12 minutes, and it's just mesmerizing, so. And the tax rate one is as well, they do a much better job of explaining. And so I think if you're going to watch any of them, watch the recapture one, because I think it's a great, very quick 12-minute explanation of recapture and how it works, so.
Will you be sending the board where the links might be for these?
Sure, mesmerizing videos, yes. So again, we'll continue to monitor the spending requirements and adjust accordingly. We'll finalize our budget proposal based upon the most current information available. We have asked for additional guidance from TEA related to CFP specifically, because we're in a unique situation with the expiration of our TIF, large TIF, in December 31 of last year. When you saw his initial numbers, they might not, might have looked a little bit odd with how the revenue's changing in the expenditures for us, because you're not really comparing apples to apples when you look at our chapter 41 payment. And it looks like it's not really changing. But it was scheduled to more than double with our TIF dropping off. So you can't really see that in the numbers. And there's also some strange things that it creates as the state is looking at what our revenue would have been in 1819 versus what it is now, or also recalculating under old law what it would have been in 1920 to 2021. There are some unique things happening with our large $2 billion that was taken off the roll, but now is coming back on the roll, and how that works. So we're not completely comfortable that the template is addressing our issues. So we want to get direct clarification from TEA that that's accurate. And so until we get that, our numbers are still estimates. But with that, we do have the TIF payment dropping off. And so once we get clarification, we'll have those final numbers. But we do look to put some additional funds into capital improvements in 1920, knowing that we have this funding cliff. You know, we don't want to jump out and put all of this money into recurring costs and then have that cliff upon us. And we do have some capital improvement needs that have not been addressed because we haven't had a bond in such a long time. So this will give us the opportunity to be able to, with board approval, transfer some funds out and set up and take care of some capital needs throughout the district, which either were not part of the bond or that we feel like need to be addressed immediately. So we'll bring you those numbers in the final version as we continue to get clarification on our funding.
Dr. Chapman, on August 21st, we're going to be approving our budget?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Yes.
Yes.
We will likely be amending it very shortly thereafter.
Yes, possibly.
I feel much better. And all I could think of as you were using some of these terminologies and explaining all these different moving parts is, who dreams up all this stuff, you know? So, but we appreciate y'all for keeping up with it and advocating on this district's behalf.
You know, one of the interesting things about House Bill 3, and then let me back up and say, in previous legislative sessions, they've given the commissioner the authority to make final decisions about a dozen times or less after legislative session. After House Bill 3 alone, it referenced back to the commissioner making a final decision 481 different times. And so, you know, whenever you see districts going, well, what if and how about? There's a lot of unknowns at this point. And so they're still trying to iron that out. And so, you know, we're not going to get the full understanding of what the expectation of the new law is. And it may be November, December. But, you know, we're, Ms. Tillman and Mr. Roderick are working tirelessly to look at and develop to make sure that we have the best plan in place. And so appreciate their hard work.
Board members, do you have any questions? Mr. Shackman?
Ms. Tillman, you were talking about the formula transition grant is going to drop off. Is it wrong of me to say that what they did is they played a shell game because they've reduced the Robin Hood payment? And now they're, and we're going to get it on this end? Okay, you're off the-
All I can say is we have a funding cliff absent any legislative change to face.
Yeah, legislation knows it. Talk to legislators across the state of Texas, the commissioner knows it. That's going to be addressed in the 87th legislative session. They know it, they see it, and they understand it. But I will say, the system is better than what it was. But they have a lot more work to do, and they know they have a lot more work to do.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman.
Job security.
That's right.
I don't know.
That's right.
Ms. Bowles?
I am very grateful to see the improvement in teacher pay. And the, I guess overall, I think that everybody is getting a percentage increase. I think that we do, when we have a more sure financial situation, you know, with, keeping in mind that we do have this funding cliff coming, to, I guess, better compensate some of those folks that didn't have people lobbying on their behalf in Austin. So our student nutrition staff, our janitorial staff, our groundskeepers, and our substitute teachers, I don't believe are quite at a place where they're at a livable wage. And again, I, you know, I understand the constraints of- And again, I, I, you know, I, I understand the constraints of what we're experiencing right now, you know, due to some, I'll, I'll try to keep the, the value statements, but the legislature needed to be a little bit less ambiguous. And, you know, I, I hope that we can make it more of a budget priority because revolving door in any position in our, in our district is a bad thing for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, Dr. Chapman, that's all on that one?
Yes, ma'am.
So item number six, items for discussion and/or action, six A was items removed from consent. We have no items removed from consent. Six B is consider all matters related to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty compensation plan, including proposed compensation adjustments. Ms. Tillman?
Yes. A competitive compensation plan has been identified as a district top priority. Information has been presented at this board meeting related to the proposed compensation plan for two thousand nineteen, twenty. Effective with the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year and in each year that the basic allotment increases, school districts must spend thirty percent of new funding from the state on compensation increases to full-time district employees other than administrators. Seventy-five percent of the new funding must be spent to increase compensation paid to classroom teachers, full-time librarians, full-time school counselors and full-time school nurses, prioritizing differentiated compensation for classroom teachers with more than five years of experience. Twenty-five percent of the new funding may be used to determine by district to increase compensation paid to other full-time district employees who are not administrators. Because the required compensation increase is calculated as thirty percent of the new revenue, the amount of new funding available for those increases changes as information becomes available. However, the districts are expected to make a good faith effort to meet the spending requirements of House Bill three. Proposed raises for two thousand nineteen, twenty school year are as follows. Starting teacher's salary of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, a twenty-one hundred increase over the two thousand eighteen, nineteen new hire schedule. Classroom teachers, full-time librarians, full-time school counselors and full-time school nurses will receive an increase of five percent of base pay effective with the first day of their two thousand nineteen, twenty assignment. In addition, to provide differentiated compensation to veteran teachers as required by House Bill three, returning classroom teachers with more than five years' experience will receive an increase of an additional one point two five percent of base pay for a total of six point two five percent increase in base pay. All hourly employees will receive an increase of four percent of base pay effective August one, two thousand nineteen. And all other professional and administrative staff not specifically identified above will receive an increase of three point five percent effective August one, two thousand nineteen. In addition to the proposed pay increases, changes to pay grades used to establish new higher pay were also made as follows. All minimum control point and maximum pay rates were increased by two percent. The school nutrition services production assistant positions, which was an M T one, was moved up to an M T two. Our school nutrition services production specialists who were on an M T two were moved up to an M T three.
And we wanna, we wanna just make that announcement that that's what Ms. Valenzuela was referring to a moment ago and I didn't wanna say anything at the time, but we did address that, plus the addition of the raise that we're providing them. So we are moving them outside of that realm, as we were saying, non-livable wages. By doing this and the raise, we are, we are getting them above that threshold. So we're moving them into, to a different pay grade, plus giving them the, the increase. And so it's, it's made them, it's a good move. It's just jumped us up quite a bit and we'll continue to take that emphasis, but just so you understand, I know that we've made some great gains.
Sorry, this is a fantastic percentage gain and, and thank you so much for the work that you put into doing it.
The bus drivers were also moved at pay grade, so we moved them from an M T four to an M T five. This increase was partly because of the market and what's happening in Dallas County and some other districts driving the market for drivers. And then we also eliminated our lowest pay grade in the system, which was an M T one A. We eliminated that pay grade completely and we've moved everybody up one pay grade there, which was our bus monitors, so we've moved them up as well. So each of these individuals who are changing pay grades will move them to that pay grade, place them where they would be in alignment with other folks in those pay grades and then we'll apply their raise to that number. So that has to be done on each, each individual in these positions. So those are the pay grade changes and again, the pay grades are used for when we're hiring people only. So we believe that this proposed adjustments aligns with the identification of compensation being a budget priority and will meet the intent of House Bill three. We ask that the board consider approving the compensation plan adjustment as presented and specific motion language options have been provided to each of you that address all of the specifics of this proposal. And one of the things we just wanna emphasize is because of the timing of when this is coming to the board, we normally don't approve raises in August, so there are categories whose raise will be effective August one, which means it won't necessarily be on their entire nineteen, twenty calendar, but there's just no way around that. And we, we couldn't have brought this to you in June because of the timing of House Bill three being released and knowing what the raises would be. But for our teacher groups, the, the large group, their first check isn't until September, so it will hit their entire contract. But our administrators and our hourly folks, it will be effective August one. So that's one difference that's this year, that's unique to this year. And this is not something we normally want to do, is bring this to you in August, but this was just unavoidable this year.
Also wanna make note that the, all the stipends are in the compensation plan. We did go through a Tasby audit on stipends and during the nineteen, twenty school year, we will alter those according to the findings that we received from Tasby, but we're going, we're asking that these, we're gonna keep these the same until we can have a little more time to, to spend in interest and looking at how we're competitive with our neighboring districts. But you can see, all stipends are listed in the compensation plan.
Board members, Ms. Valenzuela?
Can you just explain to me the, the purpose of a control point? We use it for different reasons when we're putting people on the pay grades. We look at their years of service and we look to where our other individuals are in relation to the control point. We'll use it when we place these people to see where, where they are in relation to the control point and the pay grade they're in. So if they're in ninety-eight, from ninety-eight percent to the control point, then we'll look to see if we put them at ninety-eight percent of the new control point, does that align them or not in the new pay grade? So that's, that's the major usage we, we'll use it for. Thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions? Is there a motion? Mr. Matthews?
I move that the board trustees authorize pay increases for eligible staff as follows. Classroom teachers, full-time librarians, full-time school counselors and full-time school nurses will receive an increase of five percent of base pay effective with the first day of their two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty assignment. In addition, to provide differentiated compensation to veteran teachers, returning Carrollton Farmers Branch I S D classroom teachers with more than five years' experience will receive an increase of an additional one point two five percent of base pay for a total of six point two five percent increase in base pay. All hourly employees will receive an increase of four percent of base pay effective August one, two thousand nineteen. That's today. All other professional administrative staff not identified above will receive an increase of three point five percent effective August one, two thousand nineteen. I further move that the, the teacher new hire salary schedule and C F B I S D pay grade schedules be approved as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Matthews. We have a second by Ms. Derrick. Is there any further discussion? Doesn't look like it, so that was an outstanding presentation and I appreciate the packet full of information. All those in favor? So that is unanimous, so there will be nobody opposed to that one. That takes us to item six D.
C.
Consider all matters related to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty compensation plan, including proposed stipend and supplemental pay schedules.
Ms. Tillman?
As Dr. Chapman mentioned, we have had a Tasby study performed. We received the results in June, two thousand nineteen. They are suggesting some major changes in our philosophy on stop-ins and so we have to have a time period that we can communicate with our staff where they're looking at changing from providing a stipend and additional days to just a stipend. And so we really need to work through with our staff and make sure that everybody understands this change and how it will impact them. And so we didn't feel like we had enough time to implement it with this salary schedule and so we will be looking at over nineteen, twenty. So at this time, we're making no significant changes other than minor additions to pay rates for various supplemental pay duties not approved in previous schedules. We're asking that the board of trustees consider approval of the two thousand nineteen, twenty stipend and supplemental pay schedule as presented.
Board members? Any action? Mr. Shackman?
Ms. Klein, I move that the board approve the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty compensation plan, proposed stipend and supplemental pay schedules as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Shackman. We have a second by Mr. Ramos. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of item six C? That is also unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Tillman. So item six D, consider approval of one-time supplemental payment for bus drivers and monitors for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Ms. Tillman?
In an effort to encourage, encourage our drivers and monitors to maintain good attendance and stay with the district, staff is asking the board of trustees to consider approval of a one-time supplemental pay plan for eligible transportation staff to be effective for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. The plan will include a supplemental payment to drivers and monitors in March of two thousand twenty for the fall semester and July, two thousand twenty for the spring semester. The one-time payments are contingent upon meeting specific attendance criteria as outlined in the resolution. To be eligible for the fall supplemental pay, an employee cannot have used more than two days of leave during the fall eligibility window. To be eligible for the spring supplemental payment, an employee cannot have used more than three days total, both fall and spring, to be eligible for the second payment. The amount of pay depends upon the position of the employee and will range from two hundred and twenty-five dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars per semester as outlined in the resolution. Dallas County schools had a similar program in place and we tried this in the spring of two thousand nineteen and so what we found is that we have a hundred and twenty-five drivers and monitors who were eligible in the spring for the payment. We had eighty-one that met the criteria to receive the payment and out of those eighty-one, we had fifty-three that had perfect attendance for the semester, so they were there every day to get our kids to school. So we thought this was just a very small thing we could do to continue to honor their attendance because it's so critical, they're the first person involved in getting the kid to school, so getting him ready. So we wanted to continue this and we hope that you all will support this for nineteen, twenty.
Board members? Ms. Valenzuela?
I move that we approve all matters related to the one-time supplemental payments for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, including the adoption of a board resolution authorizing years of service supplemental payment for eligible employees as presented.
I think we're on item D.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Apologize. I move that we approve the one-time supplemental payment for bus drivers and monitors for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Valenzuela. We have a second by Mr. Matthews. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, so no opposed. So that brings us to item six E, consider all matters related to one-time years of service supplemental payment for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, including the adoption of a board resolution authorizing such payment. Ms. Tillman?
Yes. A resolution is being presented for board consideration to continue our years of service supplemental payment for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. The amount of the one-time supplemental payment an eligible employee receives under this plan will be based on the employee's years of employment with the district and will be paid at five-year increments in the year following the anniversary date as outlined in the resolution. At each five-year anniversary, eligible employees will earn one hundred dollars for each year of service. In addition to the payment noted, eligible employees with twenty years or more of employment with the district will receive an additional five hundred dollar payment. In two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we paid over four hundred and eighty individuals this supplemental payment for just over six hundred thousand dollars, so you can imagine this is a very popular program amongst our staff and we hope that the board considers continuing our years of service supplemental payment plan as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Valenzuela?
I'll take another crack at it. So I, I move that we approve all matters related to one-time supplemental payments for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, including the adoption of a board resolution authorizing years of service supplemental payment for eligible employees as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Valenzuela, a second by Ms. Herbachek. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Yes, Ms. Shackman?
Ms. Tillman, the assumption is that a guesstimated payment is included in the proposed budget.
Yes, we do include.
I assumed that it was, but wanted to clarify that we are planning that.
Yes.
This is such an important program, we wanna keep it going.
Yes. We basically know right now, it's, it's just a matter of it would only go down because we would have people that didn't come back and they're not eligible, but most people stay around if they're on that anniversary year.
We just, we want people who are watching at home to know this isn't something we're adding, it is something that we have consistently, as a board, said, we value experience, we want our people to be here and we wanna make this happen and to consistently have done that and we're budgeting for it. Thank you.
So board members, we have a motion on six E and a second. If there's not any more discussion, all those in favor? So that is unanimous, nobody opposed. So our next item is agenda, item six F. In July, it is for consider all matters related to endorsement of Tasby Board of Directors nomination. In July, the list of nominated individuals for election to the Tasby Board of Directors was distributed to board presidents and superintendents. As stipulated in the Tasby bylaws, the C F B I S D Board of Trustees is eligible to endorse one nominee each for Region Ten, Position B. Position B incumbent Linda Gooch from Sunnyvale I S D has indicated she will run for reelection as eligible for endorsement. So, board members, we are, we can endorse her, we can... Have we received anybody else's?
No, she, so, so, no, she's the only one.
So she's the only one.
And so, and, so here's how this works. If, if she gets twenty-five percent of the districts to nominate her, then she will not be on the ballot and she automatically wins. If she doesn't get twenty-five percent, she's on the ballot and she automatically wins. So that's kinda how it works. So we can nominate her and that'll be one of twenty-five and she wins and if not, she's still gonna win, so.
So is, is there any discussion, action, anything anybody wants to take or do? What would y'all's preference be? Ms. Valenzuela?
I move to nominate Linda Gooch to the Tasby Board of Directors.
So we have a motion by Ms. Valenzuela, a second by Ms. Derrick. Is there any discussion on item six F? Hope she wins.
We'll see.
All those in favor? So that is unanimous also. So that takes us to item six G. Consider designation of voting delegate and alternate delegate to Tessa Tasby General Conference. Each year, the Texas Association of School Boards invites school boards in Texas to designate one voting delegate and one alternate as representation to the Tasby Delegate Assembly held each year on a Saturday in conjunction with the annual Tessa Tasby Conference. This year, it's in Dallas. It has been the practice each year for the C F B I S D Board of Trustees to designate a voting delegate and alternate using a process of nomination and a majority vote of the board. So, board members, are there any questions or any action anybody would like to take?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Matthews?
To nominate Tara...
To nominate Tara Hrbachek as our delegate and Sally Derrick as our alternate.
So, we have a nomination of Tara as the delegate and Sally as the alternate. Any other action or, oh, so, we have a...
A nomination.
We have a nomination. Do we need a second?
You don't need a second.
Take that, need a second. Mr. Ramos?
I was in a second.
You don't need one.
The only question is, are you planning to be there on that day? And could you and are you willing to serve? Okay.
I am planning on being that day, and I would really enjoy serving. I enjoy the research around the issues and what we're being in the process, so I would love to represent.
What's interesting is previously, we used to send the newest board member for this duty because it was not one that was always cherished as much.
I got to do it once.
So, we are fortunate to have an active, engaged board, and Lynn Chaffin used to always go as like the physical backup in case there was deer in the headlights look. So, I'm very pleased that the board is as engaged as they are in what's going on.
And I had no doubt that these two would be ready and willing and able to handle that, so that's why I jumped on that nomination.
So, we have a nomination.
You're good.
Do I need a vote?
You can if you'd like. No other nominations.
So, we have no other nominations, so, kind of like that other woman, Ms. Gooch, it just happens?
It just happens.
Okay, so, there we go.
Say hi to Ms. Gooch.
So, here we go, rolling on. Y'all always wonder if she was going to come talk to us about her candidacy, but I guess not.
No need.
So, that brings us to item number seven, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. I'd like to tell everybody, welcome back August 1st, Ms. Valenzuela.
So, I want to thank y'all again for looking closely at our nutrition budget and completely eliminating our reduced lunch programs, our reduced breakfast and reduced lunch, so that now everything is free breakfast and free lunch. I think it's going to make a great difference to the families of this district, and especially our hungriest children. So, thank you so much.
I would also like to thank y'all for all of the work you put into helping us be as clear in understanding where the state is leading us.
Yes.
I'd also like to remind our audience about our carnival and pep rally. Dr. Chapman, can you tell us? It's August 15th at 6:00 p.m.
It is.
What can they expect if they come?
Well, it's a surprise, but...
It's a surprise.
No, we'll have a, we'll have open house at the elementaries from 5:30. And following the open house, we hope that parents and families will come out. We'll have bounce houses for the young kids. We're going to have a celebration of all of our athletes from the four high schools. There'll be a combination band program of all high schools together. It's going to be really good. It'll be similar to last year, but just a little bit better. So, I hope that you'll come out. It'll start at 7:30 p.m.
Okay, so, I wrote down 6, but it's 7:30?
No, the carnival, you can start at the carnival. It's carnival bounce houses.
Okay, so, if I want the jump house, yeah, I go at 6:00.
Yeah, you can, you can come early. We'll have free hot dogs, drinks, et cetera.
Well, and I hear Sally's going to be singing the High School Musical song, or is it Dr. Chapman?
Oh, heaven, no, it's not going to be Dr. Chapman. Help us.
We're all in this together, so...
Yeah, well, I'll be there, but I won't sing.
Okay. Thank you, board members. Ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 8:56 p.m.